Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, September 10th, 2028 meeting, uh, 2025 meeting with the Norfolk County Commission to order. We'll read the remote order on remote participation executive order. On March 26, 2025, Governor Healy signed into law House Bill 62, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which included a two-year extension of the option for public parties to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Mass Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through June 30th, 2027. If everyone will stand and join in smooth and lag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just.
Thank you. Eric, take the roll call vote. Commissioner State.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. We have a court. We're going to go right into executive session because we have our Labor Council. Peter, some is here with us, so if I can have an agenda, if I could have a, uh...
Sure, I like the motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session for the Massachusetts law check at 38, Section 21, subsection A, subsection three. Discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, and the chair, sir.
And we will return to open session, obviously.
We're returning for open session for regular.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, seconded, to go into executive session. Roll call vote. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Shea votes yes. We are in executive session. Bill, if you make plans to talk everyone and then we'll get right back to regular agenda. William, if anyone would like, tell me, and I'll go right to it.
Okay.
That's the blind field.
All set, sir.
Thank you. We're back on the record in our regularly scheduled meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners on Wednesday, September 10th, 2025. Commissioners were on item number four.
You know that, right?
Review and potential ratification of memorandum of understanding between Norfolk County Commissioners and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 2417 Engineering.
I'd like to make a motion for the CBA to ratify the memorandum of understanding between the Norfolk County Commissioners and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 2417 Engineering as presented, and to authorize the county directive to sign of the Commissioners' behalf.
Now, second the motion.
Motion made, seconded. Any further comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, three to zero. Okay. Number five, minutes of the open session meeting of September 3rd, 2025.
I move, Mr. Chairman, approval of the minutes. That presented.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a motion. It is a pass. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number five. Number six appointments, we have none. Number seven is public comment. Each week at our meeting, we have a session of public comment. Allows people to come in and make comment or out in Zoom land. Is there anyone here who has any public comment? John, have you had any?
No, sir.
Okay. Out in Zoom land, anyone has any public comment at all? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move to next. Number eight, all business. I have none. Number nine. Personnel matters for consideration. We have several today. One in the Commission's two in maintenance and five in the, uh, school and one at the Walston Recreation Facility. Commissioner Stady.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I move the following. Your approval, uh, today's meeting first in the Commission's office. Uh, notice of resignation of Michelle Lambardini as the Human Resource Director at the rate stated effective date for resignation be 9/24/25. So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
And the Maintenance Department, um, move the notice of retirement of John Vignoni as Maintenance Supervisor for the rate stated effective date, 10/17/25. So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Moving the Maintenance Department, notice address change for Stephen McDonough as the Custodian at the rate stated and its effective date. Direct address change, 9/125. So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Norfolk County Agricultural High School.
Move the following. Uh, notice of contingent employment of Abigail Sullivan as substitute teacher instructor, sorry, at the rate stated effective 9/11/25. So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, it is a vote. Next.
Notice of contingent employment and rehire of Frederick Bernhardt as substitute instructor at the rate stated effective date 9/11/25. So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next.
Notice of resignation of Jessica Rice as Animal Science Foreperson, Equine Coordinator at the rate stated effective date. But resignation was 8/22/25. So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor? Uh, it is a vote.
Notice of resignation of Thomas Ruhana as the long-term history instructor substitute. And, uh, effective, the rate stated effective date was 8/24/25. So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor? Uh, it is a vote. And lastly.
And finally, a notice of retirement. Peter Kane as a 183-day instructor. Uh, for his rate stated his effective date of retirement, 9/125. So moved.
Second. Motion made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Uh, lastly, in the Walston Recreational Facility. Like to move the, uh, accept the motion and notice of resignation of Suzanne Hannigan as a seasonal golf associate at the rate stated effective date 9/325. So moved.
Second. Motion made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. That concludes that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Payroll expense warrants for approval.
Chairman, a warrant list of 9/10/25. We have three items. First, 26-10 payroll of the county, move approval of the sum $163,512.72. So moved.
Second. Motion made, and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next.
Second, I move the county expense warrant of lot 9-220. The 26? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's right. Okay, right, sorry. Now, move the sum of $80,920.64. So moved.
Second. Motion made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
And move approval of debt and interest at US Bank 26-3. The sum $502,365.63. So moved.
Second. Motion made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye, that concludes the warrant list, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Number 11, reports from the procurement department relative to bid openings and contract awards. We have, we had none today.
None this week.
Okay. Well, number 12, presentation of press of proposed fiscal year first supplemental transfer and capital request. The vote is expected. We'll turn this over to the Director.
Excuse me, is the chair through you?
Your attention.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was hoping I could get a copy of what they're voting on, the proposal. I know these women here, I've been spoken to them about it, but I have a feeling that is why they're here. So if I could just get a copy of it before the discussion.
It's not a public document until it's presented to the Commissioners. They'll be happy to share one with you following meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we just got it too, so.
Yeah, I did go.
But you're welcome to stay, and I'm going to turn this over to the Director. Paul, this is the document we're working off of, Commissioners.
It was the right document?
Yes, you start with the PowerPoint. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, we have before us our first supplemental for fiscal year '26. In this case, it's inclusive of not just supplemental items, but also capital items. Um, I first like to report that through the treasurer, the FY '25 surplus for the county was $2,260,629. I'm proposing to break out, um, this particular surplus into several different areas, including supplemental needs, um, capital plan, and, uh, set aside revenue pursuant to Mass General Law Check at 35, Section 30. We're also looking to modify the registry of deeds FY '26 appropriation based on actual FY '25 spending. Within the presentation which will follow, we'll talk about the capital plan. It has two funding streams, and I'll describe that in just a minute. Uh, the first funding stream comes from the surplus funds, and the second one comes from the so-called Quincy Capital Funds. The second, um, excuse me, the capital funds from the Quincy are, as you probably recall, part of the capital fund that was established by the county about three or four years ago. Requires a two-thirds vote to put money in and take money out. And then finally, I'll give a brief update on the status of the collective bargaining agreements. Um, except for schools, we're not interrupting the schools this afternoon. So first, uh, supplemental overview. Um, Bill, if you'd be so kind as to pull up the spreadsheet piece. I just wanted to show the Commissioners the front page, how the supplemental breaks out into various pieces. This spreadsheet, when he pulls it up, Commissioners will look familiar. It's the same format I've used in the past to help you understand, excuse me, how we distribute these funds. And as he's pulling it up, I'll, I'll let you know in your packet. Um, where I'm, I'm recommending that we set aside $300,000 for our stabilization account and another $100,000 on top of the hundred that we already do in our budget for OPEB. That's a combined $400,000. I'm not asking you to vote on that today. Rather, I'm showing that as sort of a set aside. Commissioner Stady, approximately two or three years ago, I had a similar request in September, and you asked, set it aside. Let's not act on it in case things change. Thought it was wise. Um, we acted on it in the spring because it became a circle. So this is a set aside. That's all this is. It's not a commitment to do it.
Right.
But I'm removing it from available spending at this time. Um, Bill, have you, okay, hasn't pulled it up yet. And in your packet, you'll also see, uh, a set aside for the capital spending budget of $750,000. This is coming from the surplus dollars. The other side of it will be for, um, $748,000. In our annual budget, we have to set aside 10% of our, uh, annual community contribution, um, and that's $748,000. Okay? Bill, I don't, okay, he's probably targeting, so.
Yeah.
Um, we, following, um, this afternoon's votes, if you agree with the presentation, we will have approximately $76,000 in supplemental funds for you to expend, with leaving a balance of $285,866,000 for the remainder of the year. Okay?
That's the rest of the year.
It is. Now, remember, this 400 part for perhaps stabilization or OPEB contributions.
Okay.
Here we are here.
Yep. Okay.
Um, the, uh, the next section is pretty consistent with what you've seen in the past. These documents, excuse me, these representations show the, the trend of surplus dollars coming to the county over the years. As you can see, we had some banner years from FY '21 to '22, uh, softening in '23, a bottoming out last fiscal year when we did not have a capital plan. But then finally, we're back up to 2.26. So we're just tracking the history of our surplus. Our current stabilization is at $6,614,429. That is approximately 17.5% of our FY '26 operating budget. Uh, each year when I present this, I, I let the Commissioners know our goal is to achieve 20% of our operating budget as recommended by Mark Abrahams. Um, in effect, if we're talking in April or May about moving the $300,000 at the top to stabilization, I think it brings us closer to 18%. So, um, we try to get, when we see surplus dollars from contribution into stabilization is an excellent financial, uh, practice. The OPEB contribution, as you know, our annual operating budget, uh, contributes regular recurring payments of $100,000 a year. Our OPEB liability has dropped from $36.8 million down to $35.7. As you can see, this representation there of how we've contributed over the last couple of years. So we're in good shape, um, once the adjusted payments are made, we're down to $35.5 million. The supplemental needs, uh, they'll be shown on the attached page, but I wanted, as I always do, to call out the adjustment made to the registry's budget. In this case, the, uh, registry's budget would be adjusted by $32,736. And I'll show it in a bigger picture when I go back to the PowerPoint in just a minute. And transfer requests, we have quite a few transfers in this, um, presentation this afternoon. I will alert the Commissioners at the end. I'm going to request up to eight motions to kind of tackle all the various pieces that are moving. But most of them, as you can probably imagine, are related to the collective bargaining agreements that you, uh, have endorsed. So overall, our picture looks like that. Observations ahead, uh, we have an improving real estate market yielding favorable close to FY '25. First quarter transaction activity is looking favorable also compared to last year's benchmark. And we're also tracking, uh, the final stages of completing our FY '24 audit. I spoke to the auditors yesterday. They're waiting for, uh, some final cash reconciliation actions through the treasurer's office, and we should be in good shape out to bed. Uh, so Bill, if you go back to the, uh, PowerPoint, we'll resume on page. Three. While Bill's pulling it up, I'll just begin the narrative. Um, this supplemental, as I mentioned, is relatively minimal. Um, we are looking for a total of $76,075. That includes $11,500 to pay, oh, closeout costs for the Dedham District Court architectural services with a beep. We have to replenish our unpaid bills category of $7,500. We're seeking to, um, put $6,000 into contractual services to offset the cost of covering our RSVP area. I think you understand we're looking at a transition in that particular program. And then finally, we're looking to bring in $30,000 as a bridge contract uh, for our Human Resources Department after Michelle leaves and before we hire our new contractor, our new FTE. And then finally, Engineering's looking for $21,075 relevant to some, uh, footed costs that they fronted for the tennis court project over at Walston Recreational Facilities. Total supplemental need of $76,075. Next, um, in our FY '26 supplemental overview, we'll be transferring funds to three departments, including the registry, maintenance, and now engineering, as we've recently ratified that contract, um, to make them whole based on the cost of the collective bargaining agreements. These transfers will draw from a previously appropriated salary reserve account of $250,000, um, as well as available registry of deeds surplus. That is actually not in play, that particular part of the presentation. We're not, we're not tackling the registry of deeds exercise in this, um, request. It was asked for by the register, but we'll stick to, uh, county revenue at this time to close this gap. Next page, Bill, page four. On the PowerPoint, pull that up. In, in the interest of the time, keep going. The annual capital budget on the second page of your spreadsheet looks like this. There's the red at the top, it's blue. Get that up. It has two columns. One again is surplus funded, and the other is what we call the Quincy Capital Fund. So the first funding stream, funding stream supports non-court related requests. It totals $750,000. Recommending $450,000 will be deposited or provided for the agricultural high school for deposit into their capital fund pursuant to an MOU that will be drafted for the trustees and the Commissioners endorsement. The MOU will define the purpose of each annual contribution by the county to the school capital plan that will seek to commit funds for capital growth to address large-scale needs beyond the annual one-time projects that are funded in the annual school budget. Next, $150,000 in total for the final phase of the office improvements at 614 High Street. Next, $124,000 for Walston Recreational Facility. This includes resumption of the annual capital investment needs. That number is now $74,000, $80,000, as well as $50,000 for funding an irrigation study. The Commissioners may know that over the years, the irrigation system, which is original to the, uh, property, is over 45 years old, um, has been the subject of multiple repairs. Um, it is a massive system that requires extensive engineering study and review uh, for pumping stations, water removal, water movement, and irrigation, um, improvements to the course. We do expect the study will take a period of six to 12 months, and we'll report back to the Commissioners on what the projected needs and costs are of a new irrigation system, um, at the, uh, Walston Recreational Facility. And then finally, um, $23,850,000, $850,000 rather, for the registry of deeds, fire alarm replacement and for front step, uh, power washing and repointing. So those will be drawn from the surplus funds that are being treated as capital.
Okay.
Page five. The FY '26 capital plan. Now, this money would be coming from the capital fund, the Quincy money. Again, exclusively for court-related projects. Um, we recommend first deauthorizing the previously authorized $2 million for the Dedham Superior Court ventilation project. This project study is completed. Costs are expected to rise, however, above the appropriation. And while the county supports the project, its complexities and costs are now due to be subordinated for more efficient solution, which I'll talk about in a moment. The project will be brought, will be brought back once adequate management resources are in place and once the proposed BMS projects are completed. So on to those. We're looking to study, um, three facility building management systems um, to Rentham, Stoughton, and Brookline Courts. This, the technology has been installed in the Dedham District Court already. That was funded through ARPA, you may recall. And it's expected to provide utility savings via automated HVAC controls and diagnostic alerts. This is an investment in efficiencies, basically what they're doing. We're also looking to repave and install improved safety lighting to the Dedham Municipal Lot. Existing lot surfaces failed. Existing lighting produces middle effect for safe use while also casting light into neighboring homes. We're looking to improve the front steps to Rentham District Court and Dedham Superior Court for power washing and repointing. And then finally, the rear porch of the so-called Blue House is falling down. The existing porch is not safe for use. With respect to costs, I call out the items that are shown under the blue column on the right. We're looking at $225,000 for the BMS studies, $14,000 for the front step repointing at Rentham, $21,100 for the Dedham Superior Court mini split repair and the lift rental, $20,000 for the Blue House porch replacement, $350,000 for the Dedham District Court parking lot resurfacing and lighting, and then finally, $18,450 for the power washing and repointing of the Dedham Superior Court. Um, I want to call out that I am calling for a 10%, what I'm calling a tariff upcharge. Several years ago during the, um, the, after, uh, the effect of COVID, many supply streams were being impacted, um, and longer jobs were being outpriced because they couldn't keep track of the inflation. We're, we're expecting some tariff impacts, so we're budgeting 10% on certain projects, and you'll see those listed at the bottom. Under the capital surplus, that's $2,150 that will hold in the event that we see some upcharges coming in from tariffs and another $37,000 on the capital Quincy money. The next page on the PowerPoint, page six, Bill. This is a bigger picture so the Commissioners can see how the adjustment is made each year. As you know, in September, the first meeting, we do look at the registry of deeds spending pursuant to 64D. And the actual spending from FY '24 was $2.824,997 million. When you adjust that at 1.025% of prior year spending, it brings the revised, uh, projected, um, appropriation to $2.895,622 million, which is approximately $32,736.96 below what was appropriated in May. So the county proposes to reduce this appropriation by that amount of $32,736.96 from the following group two item, uh, which is printing and binding, binding. Excuse me. Next page, seven. Uh, collective bargaining agreements. All three collective bargaining agreements have now been ratified. That's the maintenance, registry, and engineering. Broadly, each includes cost of living allowances of $333 to cover the period of July 1st, 2026, such as 2025, through June 30th, 2028. These three departments have currently drawn upon their, or will draw upon their FY '26 appropriation to fund these agreements via a vote of the county Commissioners upon ratification. They now require transfer of funds, as shown in the attached spreadsheet, to make sure their FY '26 appropriation is whole. The Commissioners have not acted, as you know, upon the non-union colonnies. This item is expected to be discussed in an upcoming meeting in October, 2025. Which is the following, and last page of this presentation is a list of eight motions. Um, we had to break them out for clarity and purpose. I'll divide the red folder to whoever's willing to make the motions, but they are listed one through eight in that folder. Um, that concludes my presentation of the supplemental and capital plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Richard, you want to answer some of the questions?
Well, question, questions, Chris?
Go ahead. Richard, go ahead. Yeah. Look, yeah.
Thank you. Of course, well, good job. Thank you. Very thorough, very concise. Um, just a couple of ideas or just questions I had. So on the first supplemental, we're going to be seeking approval in total for $76,075.
Seventy-six, yep.
That correct? Okay. All right, so I, I followed you okay on that. You did have a slight headache. I'm a little confused. On the second one, we're going to seek to deauthorize the, uh, plan we had in place for $2 million, right? Am I correct on that?
That's right.
But we're still seeking $750,000 out of the Quincy, so-called Quincy Capital Fund?
No.
No? Okay.
We're seeking $685,550 out of the Quincy. That's the far-right column.
My bad. Okay, we're here. Okay. So we're going to reject or deauthorize?
Push back the $2 million into the Quincy.
And we're seeking that. And that's to do work on Stoughton Court, Rentham Court, and?
Brookline.
Brookline, thank you. Okay, that's good. And improvements at the registry and also at the Blue House.
And the Dedham District Court.
And Dedham District Court, okay. Just want to make sure I'm following the money here. All right. And the last thing I had, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Um, we're, we're reducing the registry actual appropriation, appropriation by $32,000 out of printing binding. How much is in there now, Robert? Do you know?
Um, it had sufficient funds to afford that. We, what we do is we, we make it a group two, uh, reduction. If the register feels like he has sufficient resources in other group two appropriations, he can ask for a transfer within, and he can satisfy that. And certainly, if this reduction is burdensome or troublesome to the registry, they can also ask for supplemental as well.
I was going to say, because I know we're getting this right now. I mean this respectfully. Did you communicate to the register?
No.
That was going to be a cut?
I did not.
If you had any thoughts on that?
I did not, no.
Well, Margaret.
I've attempted, excuse me, Commissioner, I've attempted to do that in the past, and the register is not communicative.
Okay.
So I stopped my attempts to do that.
Okay, I, I only ask.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So at least if there's an issue on that, they could be, they could come back. But we do need to cut it by $32,000.
That's your call.
That's our call. That's our call. Okay.
You want to adhere to the practice.
I think it's going to be same. Okay. All right. Uh... That was it. No, I, I, so I have questions on the presentation. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Any other question? If, on these court-related ones, is this going to be the same as the other money we can eventually recover from the state?
Yes.
So.
Right, and I've spoken to Phil that once these funds are expended, the, the tracking has to include in our accounting system a code that identifies the expense so that when we
Okay.
file our reimbursement request, we see that $225,000 was expended on the BMS systems, and as that money comes back, it cannot be used for general fund purposes. It has to be, uh, identified and set aside for a vote to put it back into the Quincy money. So we have to make sure that we're collecting that, those funds and separating from all the other reimbursements for deposit back into the Q fund.
But they are ultimately reimbursable.
They are. That's why we're doing this. Yep.
Okay. While we're on that.
Yes, go ahead.
Do we need to look at Quincy where it's still ours, sort of, kind of?
We don't own it, so we don't, we don't put any.
Because they had a lot of time with air conditioning, I mean, at the summer, I mean.
Yeah, that expense is completely at the, uh, responsibility of the Commonwealth.
Commonwealth, okay.
What we do is we provide support to coordinate the installation and maintenance of it. Um, on occasion, we've incurred expenses, relatively small ones, for the Commonwealth because we're quicker on our procurement.
Right.
Um, and then they reimburse us through our, um, standard contract that we have with the meat here. I just signed the standard contract last week, so we're in good shape for the coming fiscal year. Um, and then they reimburse us through our um standard contract that we have with them each year, I just signed the standard contract last week, so we're in good shape for the coming fiscal year, but. No, we don't put capital money towards.
So, no capital on Quincy, okay, all right, makes sense. Thank you for the questions.
Commission, go ahead, okay. So we need this document to go for the, to go into next week.
Yes, uh, next Wednesday, as you know, you have an advisory board meeting at the Agricultural High School, the finance committee will meet at five o'clock and the advisory board will meet at six. On your approval, we'll convey these documents to them, their consideration.
Very similar to last year.
That's right.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, commissioners, what is your, well, if you wanna. Draw your attention to me.
What I've done, commissioners, is uh, as you know, fill line to us, prepares the sheets that you sign and conveyed in the advisory board.
Right.
Each one here has a signature line, but also will number them for the um proposed motions, if you're inclined, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go right here, thank you.
Mister she, Commissioner Shea, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Why is the uh management, the non-union being pushed off till the end of October?
I think today we finished with the engineers, not five minutes after you or before you came in today, Kevin was here to sign off. Then. Then we went into discussion about it, just like everything else, then we came out and approved it. Just like we did on the registry workers and we did on the maintenance workers. So now we're caught up on the, all of the unions, so now we turn around, we have a history of. Giving the non-union people the same, but there's a whole little process we have to go into, uh. I mean, it's. I, do I want to make a promise, I, I don't know that the date is, is an arbitrary, but you know, it's September tenth already. Um. It's not going to be held up in any way, but it takes a couple of weeks, so. In fact, if I.
I don't think we're looking at it.
I gave your date.
We're not looking at that, but we need.
Well, if I gave your day of September. You'd be saying why it wasn't, you know.
We just, we just wrapped up, we literally just wrapped up the contract.
That's correct.
We need to get our numbers straight and also allow us just more or less sorting things out to make sure you have the right numbers. We also have an H R person leaving, so kind of, you know, affects our little bit of our operation as well, but don't forget, whatever is done. Traditionally, there's always been a retroactive pay, so, you know, it, it would be. You know, included, but I don't think we're going to be acting on it right away, we gotta leave a little time. But you know, it could be something else.
So, can I ask a question? Is this gonna be discussed at the advisory board next, next Wednesday? The non-union?
No.
Not unless the advisory board member asks what about the non-union people, which. You'll get the same answer, I guess, yeah, we might know a little more next week for the, but. The date, but.
If, if it'll ease your minds, um, so, I, I've been doing this for a while, and. Uh, normally the, the unions get taken care of because they're part of the negotiations and then we look to all the non-unions, which includes everyone. And um, it's usually the exact same percentage, it's the retroactive date, goes right back to July first. So it might be a couple of weeks after the unions get approved, for you guys to get approved. But it's gonna be, we anticipate it's gonna be the same, and it's gonna be retroactive to July first, so. I would just say, just relax a little bit, I, I foresee that everything's gonna be, is exactly as it always has been. But I appreciate that, that you're here, I appreciate your concern, but um. It should be fine.
There's no intent not to move forward, it's just that we need some time, that's all, that's all that. And it's, nothing, there's no, I love, there's no malicious intent here, we're just kind of like, we just wrapped up. The unions, we're just, on, as the ink is drying, so, need a little breathing space, we'll get it done.
And, and, and the unions aren't ratified until the advisory board says so.
Right.
So, we, you know what I mean, we can't act on it until after we get through all that.
That's not accurate.
That's not accurate?
No, the advisory board does, and their only function is to fund the contracts, and they've already done that, they've appropriated the funds for the contracts.
Okay.
You ratified the contracts.
So they go into effect when you sign them?
When you appropriate and then you assign, yes, as long as there's funding and it's already been approved.
Okay.
To the reserve.
So, so it's soon. So, but it will be retroactive to July first, just like everyone else.
Okay, thanks, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, gentlemen, page eight. This will be a twenty-six proposed supplemental budget and capital fund. Proposed motion, Richard, do you want to make any?
I move first motion to deauthorize the capital fund sum of two million dollars previously authorized. For D S C ventilation project and return those fund through the Quincy District Court Fund, so-called capital fund, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, in all favor.
Aye.
Is a vote.
Second, I move to fund six hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred fifty dollars of capital projects through the Quincy. District Court Fund, so-called capital fund, as listed in this presentation, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, did all in favor.
Aye.
Is a vote, next.
Third, I move to, sorry, sir, I move to fund seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of capital projects through fiscal twenty-five surplus. Provided further that the sum of four hundred fifty thousand dollars in my for Northford County. Agricultural High School Capital Fund shall not be transferred until a fully executed memorandum of agreement of understanding, I'm sorry. Between the commissioners and the Board of Trustees is signed, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, did all in favor.
Aye.
It is a.
Mr. Chairman, I could, just before you move on from my number three. I have conveyed to the school superintendent the intention to fund um the schools through this capital action of four hundred fifty, he is over the moon.
Yeah.
Um, probably, by the way. Good hire, ver- very much enjoyed working with him, um, I mentioned to him that, you know, we're going to try to work towards an M O U. That structures um the annual movement of these funds to a capital fund that will have a long-term benefit for the schools to handle large-scale capital projects. Um, so, the, the devil's in the details, I'll work after the advisory board on a document. Um, but I suspect the trustees ought to sign off on it, that's why the language is intended to show some level of. Higher executive agreement on this principle, because it is a policy shift, we're not simply handing. Over money for them to handle various capital projects any longer, we want to commit to the long-term future, but it takes everybody. Everybody's agreement, while Jeremy, Jeremy and I agree, you folks have a decision of policymakers, so. You'll see and hear more about the M O U probably the next month or two.
So you, I'm sorry, this chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
You don't expect this to be ready for tomorrow night, right, the M O U?
No, no, no.
Don't trust me?
That's um.
Trust me, yeah, bro.
Yeah, no, it, it would not be, Commissioner, um, what we're simply trying to do is to approve right now of the funding. To say, yes, this is what it's for, and it will be conveyed when the M O U is signed.
Okay, okay, good.
So that's all it's doing.
That's good, I think it's good stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Real good stuff.
So, thank you for the moment there.
Yeah. So three are done, Mr. Chairman, want to continue?
We, we need a vote on three and we'll go on to the fourth.
You made the motion, right?
Yeah.
Uh, second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is a vote, we're on number four.
All right, number four, I move to fund seventy-six thousand seventy-five dollars of supplemental projects. From the fiscal twenty-five surplus, as listed and described in our handout today, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Number five.
Number five, I move to transfer one hundred eighty-five thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars twenty-six cents. Uh, from the salary reserve to fulfill the provision of employee collective bargaining agreements. As listed and described in our packet presentation today, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, did all in favor, aye.
Aye. My number six.
Is a vote.
Yes, sir, I move to amend the fiscal twenty-six registry of deeds appropriation. To the sum of two million eight hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars four cents. By reducing group two line item one point three four oh point five two nine five point zero 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 zero. Printing binding, uh, by the sum of thirty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars ninety-six cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, did all in favor.
Aye.
Is a vote.
Number seven, move to approve sixty thousand dollars in transfers within a Norfolk County. Agricultural High School budget as listed and described in the project packet presentation, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, did all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last motion, Mr. Chairman, I move uh to transfer eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventeen cents. On the registry of deeds uncommitted balance to the general fund reserve account, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, did all in favor.
Aye, that concludes the motions.
This includes a motion on November September tenth regular meeting, okay.
All right.
Thank you, so which package, what is what we're gonna see next week?
It is, um.
Within.
Yep, there may be. Blessing of modifications.
That's fine.
Since there was discussion about the non-union calls, um. The um, the actions next will be to, as Commissioner State pointed out, starting to run the numbers on what those values might look like. Um, we have some preliminary ideas, but we literally have to get onto each individual person, do the calculations, and we, we may need some modifications, but we'll bring them forward if we need to. As, as they develop, so thank you.
Okay.
Just for uh, personal reasons, if, with specif- If we could conclude that maybe in early October rather than later, but we can talk about that, if it's possible, that's all. But, I'm sure we're not going to do it again in October, but, anyway, point taken.
Moving on, number thirteen, report of the county director. Uh, thank you, thank you. Get a line here. Try to stay organized, but ultimately things don't, that's, all right.
These might have got mixed up, I don't know.
We'll deal with those later, thank you. Actually, the first item, I just want to let the commissioners know, we've been given a notice by the Norfolk County Retirement Board. We will be holding a um. Informational session on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at ten A M to discuss the latest actuarial valuation. This invitation went out to all the Norfolk County Retirement Board's systems, including many of our communities, as you know, that join it. Um, either I or Mr. Buckley will monitor this development, and I will also, with the commissioners, know I spoke to Paul. Connors, you're representative to that board, uh, to have and share information with us as soon as it becomes available, commissioners may recall. That a year ago, um, there were some calculations made on the actuarial schedule that were erroneous on behalf of the commit, on the county. Those numbers have been amended for F Y twenty-six to our satisfaction. Um, so we're going to keep a close eye on where the actual numbers move again for twenty-seven and forward. Um, so we'll report back and probably have Mr. Connors in. Uh, shortly after the presentation, go through the impact of those speakers, um, by the way, it's always a pleasure talking to Paul Connors. Um, next. Um, I just mentioned, just to alert the commissioners, I just signed the F Y twenty-six Quincy District Court's uh annual contract. Um, the only major difference is we are now covering the custodial. Um, needs of the so-called, I don't know if it's the McGrath or the McIntyre Building, but it's the building right outside of the.
That's the McGrath, Mc- McIntyre.
Thank you, uh, so that's now part of what we get reimbursed for, um. We have identified an individual um to assist us with the transition of Michelle Abadini's departure to hopefully a new hire. Uh, first, the commissioner should know that we have posted her position on M M A and on Indeed, and we've begun receiving it. Um, resumes, I've already approved three for interview, and I hope to see them next week. We're looking to collaborate with other uh H R professionals to help us screen these candidates, interview them. Um, Michelle will assist us as long as she's with us, but this may take us beyond her exit date. Um, late this afternoon, Michelle confirmed that the Dedham, Town of Dedham's Human Resources Director has agreed. To sit in on the interviews as well as my predecessor, Mike Mullin, who you now know works for the Town of Foxborough, the capacity of human resources director, so. We'll have plenty of help to look at these candidates and hopefully find somebody uh to replace Michelle. But meanwhile, um, working with um capital strategies, I've begun to screen a gentleman by the name of Timothy Goddard. As a potential individual to help us with this transition, Timothy is a former town administrator in the town of. Carlisle, he's a former assistant town manager in Framingham, he's got expertise in compensation, classification. Granting and so forth, strong administrator, uh, with years of experience, uh, of closer talking with him, so. Um, I'll alert the commissioners down the road, we indeed are on a new contract with them, but that is our plan right now. I wanted to alert the commissioners also, I want to give Lucille a shout-out, she and Bill, uh, while I was on vacation a week or two ago, identified a transit grant opportunity. Uh, through the state that they intend to put forward, um, we'll report more once we get the, the grant ready, um, this perhaps could be additional revenue to help with the. Transportation program through R S V P. Um. This afternoon, um, actually it was this week, we were notified that Dedham did, did sign the I M A for the weights and measures program.
Oh, wow.
We're delighted to have Dedham join towns of Needham.
All right.
Westwood, Franklin and Rhythm, as this regional program continues to grow, um, I cannot thank Bill enough, he has. Given so much to this great new regional program, done a great job patiently working with Dedham, and um, this will be a large. Impactful assignment for Bill Mullin and Greg, once um they get out there, um, they now have the resources, you know, their new vehicle's been delivered, so. We look forward to great things with uh the town of Dedham.
Bless you.
Yes, sir.
Needham, Canton, Westwood.
Franklin and Rhythm.
Franklin, Rhythm and then Dedham, okay.
Yeah, six altogether, Commissioner.
How could I forget the town for, it's great.
Yeah, I love that one.
No, it's good, no, it's good.
Needham, Canton, Westwood, Franklin, Rhythm and, oh, yeah, right now, six, good.
Well, and then, then, I'm sorry.
I just, I'm amazed at the. Evolution of this program and how it was stumbled, not stumbled on, but looked at and then.
Memo.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's just. It's, you know, there's a third of the county almost, I mean, these, these towns, when you throw Needham. Rhythm, and, and you throw Needham, Dedham and Franklin in there, they're, they're some of the bigger towns.
Yes.
And I think it's a.
Stay away from that again.
Going very good at a minimal cost.
Um, finally on my list is, uh, just ask the commissioners for the consideration of rescheduling the meeting of September twenty-fourth, two P M. Well, uh, this would allow us to have a reception for Michelle on her last day.
She'll be best, it's fine. Um, but why can't we take care of that right now?
Yeah.
Is there any objection to having the meeting on the twenty-fourth at two P M?
Fine, well.
Okay, say that as a function.
That is all I have, thank you.
Can you do it? Any questions on the do? Signing my life over here. Okay, last call. Number fourteen, emergency items are topics that the chair did not reasonably. Anticipate, I have none, is there any other business needed to be transacted today?
No, sir.
Take a motion to adjourn.
All right, I move we adjourn at uh the time of two-ten.
Second.
Motion made in second, did. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we are adjourned at two-ten, thank you.